All right, I'll go ahead and call our meeting in order. I appreciate everyone being here and we have more than a quorum. We have our entire board team here, so that covers item one on our agenda. Item two is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Pastor Tommy Richardson from Emmanuel Baptist Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation this evening. Thanks for being here, sir.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, I thank you for this group that's gathered here, the time that they give to this very important endeavor. I pray, Lord, that you'd give them wisdom, that you give them courage, that you give them discernment. I pray, Father, that they would have the foresight that's necessary for this upcoming school year and for the years to come after that. I pray that tonight would be a night that they'd honor you and all of their decisions, and, Lord, that, again, they would have that extra supply of wisdom that could only come from you. We do pray for our schools. We pray for our kiddos, that this would be a great and safe year. Pray for all the faculty, that they would too, would have just an incredible year. And, Lord, at the end of this year, we look back and we could see just how your protection, your provision, has come upon San Angelo Independent School District. Again, we give this night to you, and, Lord, I pray again for those households that are represented here tonight, that you just put that extra hedge of protection around them, and that, Father, they could rest easy, wake up refreshed, ready to go, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Anybody that calls our students kiddos, it's got to be a friend of mine, so, thank you. Okay, well, we don't have any students here to lead us in our pledges, so I get to do that if we'll stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to tonight's board meeting. As president, the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome everyone here who's present tonight at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those of you who are watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for our district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed tonight on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of San Angelo Independent School District's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence their cellphones. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting and to thank you for taking the time to be with us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school district. Now, I might turn my cellphone off. So that covers our pledges and our invocations, as well as our public announcement. Item four is the one I just mentioned. Anyone wishing to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening, now would be a great time to do so. I see no one coming forward, so we'll move forward to item five, which is the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve the minutes of our July 13, 2015 Finance and Prudential Workshop, and our July 20, 2015 regular board meeting. Are there questions or comments concerning our minutes? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is an update on academic progress. Ms. Holahan's going to give us an update.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Districts and campuses across the state are evaluated on four indexes. Index one is student achievement. Index two is student progress. Index three is closing the achievement gap, and index four is post-secondary readiness. Our district earned a rating of met standard in all four of these indexes. Twenty-two of our 23 campuses met standard in all four of these indexes. We have put measures in place to ensure the future success of our improvement required campus, as well as our fragile campus. We have added an additional ELL, English Language Learner, support on five campuses, additional content-specific support such as math, implemented a district initiative of writing across the district, and opened three full-day pre-Ks. And I think you all were only believing that it was going to be two, but it worked out that we opened three. We saw an increase in college and career readiness. It went from 61 percent last year, which was the 2013-14 year, to 75 percent. We really are excited about that. And a decrease in the dropout rate. Additional highlights for our academic year include 95 percent of our students that sat for an AP class, that sat in an AP class, also sat for the AP test, and that has not been true in the past. Forty-nine percent of those students scored a three or higher, and this past year, the legislature passed a law stating that a university must accept a score of three or better unless it is a prerequisite in a major field. As a side note, we had 15 freshmen that scored a three or better on an AP test.
Wow.
Our students earned 879 dual-credit class credits, including the threes or better scored on the AP tests. Our students earned 1,312 college credits this past year. These successes are not only the hard work of our students and teachers, but also the partnership with Howard College and Angelo State University. Is there any questions?
Shelley, where's the third pre-K going to be at? Or where is it at?
We opened that at Altaloma.
At Altaloma?
Because it was a small population, and even if we combined what had... The reason we did it is when we combined the morning session and the afternoon session, they still didn't have 18 in there, and we had a waiting list for full day, so we could add those in there, and the parents were excited about that.
So that's three full-day.
Yes, sir.
Fannin, Bradford, and Altaloma. Good, good.
Other questions for Shelley? Thank you, Shelley. That's a good report. We appreciate that, and also the actions we've put in place for fragile and schools that are, you know, we're still seeking to improve. Anything from our team at Goodfellow?
Yes, thank you.
Colonel, yeah?
I just wanted to mention, next week, on the 3rd of September, we are hosting our next community partnership meeting down at ASU. We're doing a refresh, trying to reinvigorate. Over the past year, we signed nine memorandums of understanding with the community, including one with SAISD, with our Hanks program, and now we're looking to... For a good showing of both community leaders and our base leadership down there to... Since we have a big turnover, and we're looking to brainstorm for a bunch of new, hopefully, initiatives going forward, and that's all we've got going on.
Good. That's awesome. I know we had, you know, we were pleased to have nine last year, but there's certainly opportunities to move forward and probably some opportunities to, you know, enliven the ones that we've already started. So, thank you. That covers our report section. Dr. Detloff?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lehman, let me add that the Vedder's are all in. So Colonel Vedder's spouse is a teacher for us as well, so we are pleased that we hired her this past year, and so it's exciting to have both of them helping our school district. So we appreciate it.
It was a great, busy weekend.
I can imagine.
Preparing, but also it was great to... My daughter, it was her first day of her last year of school, so she's a senior this year, so it was a nice picture moment this morning, so.
Wow. That's good.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move forward to item seven for our consent items. Do we have a motion to approve consent items A through E?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Dindel to approve our consent items. Item A is consider donations. Those are listed on our overhead. We appreciate the support of businesses and folks in our community, so thanks to them. That's item A. Item B is to consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year 2015, 2016. Item C is to consider bid number 15-015. That bid was for office and classroom supplies and furniture. Item D is to consider bid number 15-016 for printer toners and cartridges. And item E is to ratify the administration's action in sale of properties. I think there's just a single property that we're selling in conjunction with other taxing entities, the county and city, in selling properties that are delinquent on their taxes. So that's those items. Is there anybody that would like to pull any of those items or any comment about our consent items? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item eight, consider proposed amendment for the district's official budget.
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Archer and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Are there questions or comments concerning our amendment? Jeff, you want to refresh our memory and make sure that each year, at this point in time, we kind of finalize all of our budget and make... Move things around on the expense side, but this year, we have a little bit better surprise because we've got quite a bit more revenue than what we expected.
Yes, sir. Like you said, we... This is a final amendment. It cleans up our expenditure side of the budget so that we can pass the audit standards, but the good news is that we're looking at an increase of revenue of $3.8 million. We looked at the detail of that during pre-agenda, and so essentially what that does, if you looked on page, I think it was 49 of the budget book, it pretty much balances the budget for the school year. So it's a good amendment. Most of the revenue was due to average daily attendance increase, and then we had a kind of surprise with the Shar's federal dollars came in that we were not anticipating. So overall, great news. We're in very good shape.
Thanks, Dr. Bright. Other questions or comments concerning that? And we certainly appreciate the community's support. You know, we get paid based on kids being at school and also the number of students that we have in our student population, so that's really encouraging that we were able to maintain the number of students, actually increased that, and then our enrollment, as far as average daily attendance continues to be, you know, stay in about a 97 percent range, so that helps. Dr. Detloff?
Dr. Bright, did you mention our enrollment increase?
No, I was going to let you do that.
Okay, super. It's a good time. Speaking of average daily attendance, today, our leadership team reviews enrollment numbers across the district every day for the first couple of weeks of school, and today, it appears that we are 50 students higher than we were last year at this time on the first day. So we have grown 50 students in our school district, and we will let you know how those numbers iron out over the next few days.
Any other questions or comments concerning amendments to our district's official budget? Any public comment? If not, I'll call the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item nine, to consider the proposed amendments to the district's official budget and our debt service fund.
Once again, this is just cleanup. We went through a refunding this school year and needed to make an amendment adjustment to our expenditure, and we added some revenue as well, so we'd ask that you approve this amendment as well.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Bright. Do we have a motion to approve? Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve our amendment to the district's official budget and our debt service fund. Any board comments or questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider our bills, accounts, and financial statements for both June and July of 2015.
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Archer and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve our bills, accounts, and financial statements for June and July of 2015. Questions or comments? Mr. Archer?
Mr. Lehman, just a note to our viewers that in our effort at transparency, we provide all of these reports online. You go to our website, saisd.org, click on the board tab, and there they are.
Thanks, Mr. Archer, for that reminder, and we encourage everyone to do that. Comments from our board team concerning our bills, accounts, or financial statements? Public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 11, to conduct our public meeting to discuss the proposed 2015-2016 budget, as well as our tax rate. Dr. Bright?
Thank you. This is just part of the process we have to go through in order to adopt our budgets each school year. Of course, we had our workshop at the 1st of August and had an opportunity to discuss it again last week, or two weeks ago at pre-agenda, and so this is just an opportunity for any taxpayer in the district to step up and ask questions or make comments about our budget. And again, it's just required by law that we make this opportunity available to the public, so at this time, I'd say if anyone would like to step up and speak and discuss the budget, they're welcome to do so.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Bright. And that... And we also are required to post that in the paper and all that kind of stuff, so that's been duly posted, so we followed all the procedures that are associated with us announcing our tax rate for this year. Are there questions or comments from our board team? This is not an action item, correct? Just a public hearing?
Just a public hearing.
So we have had that hearing, and we'll move forward to item 12, which is to consider the adoption of our 2015-2016 official budget.
Yes, sir. Attached to your board agenda is a resolution to adopt the M&amp;O, Maintenance and Operations, Food Service, and the Debt Service budgets in the district. We've discussed these pretty thoroughly over time. We're looking at approximately $109 million worth of revenue, $105 million worth of expenditures. Now, I would like to have you look on page 154 in your board book. What that's going to show on paper is a $4.1 million surplus budget at this point, but I do want you to understand, first off, we were waiting to see where enrollment came in, and enrollment is in great... In a great situation at this point. We have the enrollment, now we just need to get the kids to come to school all year, and then we'll be in great shape budget-wise. But for that $4.1 million, what we're going to suggest doing is we're going to take the first $1.5 to $1.6 million to pay for the tennis court constructions that's coming up in September, I believe we'll bring it to you for approval. We're keeping our fingers crossed it comes in at $1.5, $1.6. That'll leave approximately $2.5 million, and it just so happens that we have $2.5 million worth of capital outlay requests that we showed you a couple of weeks ago as well. So that money is spoken for. Of course, we also have many, many more needs around the district that need to be looked at as well, and we'll discuss that when we get to the committed fund balance. So, yes, it looks like a surplus budget on paper, but that money is probably spoken for already, and as Dr. Detloff said, with our enrollment coming in like it did today, we're in great shape and ready to move forward. So I guess at this time, we'd like for you to make a motion to adopt the resolution and move forward.
Make a motion to approve the resolution and order to adopt the 2015-2016 Maintenance and Operations Food Service and Debt Service budgets by fund and function as discussed and presented.
Motion, Gerard. We have a motion by Gerard and a second by Mr. Parker. Yeah? Do we have any further questions or comments? Again, as Dr. Bright mentioned, we've had a lot of meetings in August and gone through this in detail, and then we also had a pre-agenda that we have each month to cover a number of these items that we're covering tonight. So I think the board's well-versed in what we're planning on spending, and I'd just make one further comment. That's concerning our enrollment. Actually, we won't be at peak enrollment probably till after Labor Day, but, you know, we're tracking where we were versus last year, so even though we'll have some more students come in, most likely, we kind of look at what we had the first day of last year and where we have an increase versus that, and our budget is budgeted for us to be flat on students. So as we move forward, if we encounter or have the opportunity for more students to come, then that will definitely impact the amount of money that we get from the state. But as Dr. Bright mentioned, we're certainly in good shape currently. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other further comments? Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. That's the adoption of our official budget. Item 13 is to consider the adoption of our 2015-2016 Maintenance and Operations tax rate, as well as our interest in sinking fund tax rate, and Dr. Bright's going to review that with us as well.
Yes, sir. Once again, attached to your board agenda is an ordinance to set the tax rate for the 2015-16 school year. We're looking at maintaining the Maintenance and Operations tax rate at $1.4, which most schools in the state are pretty well locked into that, and they don't have much of a choice anyway. But the debt service tax rate, we are looking at reducing that a half penny from 20 cents to 19 and 1/2. That is going to create a deficit budget in the debt service. I think you saw that on the other page, but we feel very comfortable with that. We have adequate fund balance to cover it, and we also have a cushion of state aid that's going to take care of that as well. So we'd ask that you look for the ordinance to set the total tax rate at $1.23 and 1/2 for this upcoming school year.
Questions or comments for Dr. Bright concerning our... The ordinance to set our tax rate? Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance to set the total tax rate at 1.235 for the 2015-2016 school year. The rate is allocated as follows: $1.4 for the total rate is specifically levied for Maintenance and Operation expenses, and 0.195 for the total rate is specifically levied for debt service.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Parker to adopt our 2015-2016 M&amp;O tax rate and INS tax rate. Other questions or comments from our board team? If not, we'll go ahead and call our motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 14, considering... To consider options for designating our fund balance. Dr. Bright?
Sir, thank you. This is something that the board has discussed repeatedly throughout the school year, actually, and Dr. Detloff and I have met last week, but we've been discussing this throughout the summer as well, about where we want to commit fund balances toward future projects or items, and this is something that needs to be done before the audit takes place, so this is kind of our last opportunity to do this. It doesn't lock us into anything, but it is sort of an indication to the public that we are serious about tackling these projects that are on the list, and, you know, before we actually do them, they will come back to the board for a final thumbs up or thumbs down, and we'd like for you to take a look at these. These are on page 160, and we can make any changes you'd like or additions. I would say first, we'll look at the committed fund balances. We have some interest... Some very strong interest in adding maybe six classrooms at Glenn Middle School. We think that's going to be in the $1 million to $1.5 million range, so we comfortably put 1.5 million in for that. With your permission, we'd like to get on that pretty quick, if that's something the board is truly committed to doing. We'll get out there and get after it. We have also talked about Fort Concho. I'm going to tell you, though, before you get too excited about that, we don't have the land space to do this project at this point. We need to add about four to six classrooms over there as well, and that's just additional classrooms. We still have about six portables, or we have three portals with six classrooms sitting on that property as well. So, you know, that's something we're interested in, but I'm telling you, that's nothing we can tackle anytime soon because we just simply don't have the space to do this, so we need to discuss that more in the future.
And that was one of the one... It wasn't touched by the bond during that.
No, it was not.
It wasn't touched at all, so.
Not. We've also discussed that we may want to look at bleacher replacements at Donski and Lakeview Baseball and Softball Fields. We think that's in the $1.5 million range. We also, I think, in Friday Facts, we sent out some information telling you about some timelines that some of these take. These don't happen overnight. They... Six, nine months down the road, that's why we need to get on them, because it takes a lot of time upfront to plan these and make it happen. If that's something we want to pursue, I don't even know if we could pull that off before the season starts. But we'll talk about that in the near future. Next, on capital equipment. The last couple of years, we've been replacing air conditioning systems at campuses. Altaloma was one this last summer, along with Bel Air, and then the previous year, we did Fort Concho, and it seemed like we did Austin one year. So this has been going on for a while. Our next item on the list is McGill. Many of those are original units, 25, 29 years old. That's not original to the building, but they're old. And so we're thinking that that's the next one we want to do. We're also looking two years down the road, and we think that Pays and Carver is next on the list if we can get down the road. So that's about 1.2 million. That takes a long time to work on, and that would be a summer project if we decide to move forward on that. Two items here that cannot be summer projects. We know through the facility assessment that the CFC boiler system is probably on its last legs. We're keeping it going, but it could pretty much crater on us any day. We're afraid of that that could happen. This is a tricky project. It's not something that can be done over the summer. Our last estimate was that it's about $3 million. We'll have to figure out some way to phase it out. It might be two summers. It might be part of one summer during the school year, and then another summer. We're not quite sure, but if that's something we really need to look at, it's going to take some time to plan and put this one together. So that's on our list as well. The next item on there are the dressing rooms at the Central Gymnasium. We know that the plumbing systems in there are bad. They cannot be repaired. This is a major undertaking to go in and take care of that. We think the price tag on this will be about $4 million. I think we also looked at probably 18 months of construction, and how do you phase it out and still be able to use the facility while this is going on? So that's something as well. If you're serious about wanting to do that, then we'll start getting a team together and start putting the plans together. It might be December before we can actually come back to you and say, here's what we think we can do, but... And then you're looking at 12 to 18 months down the road to get it done. So this is a major undertaking that the board may want to take a look at. The last two items are just... They're small items that we like to keep money in place in case we have an insurance claim. Our deductibles there are, you know, generally $100, $150,000 per occurrence, depending on what happens. And then we kept this portable building fund in there because we thought the oil field was going to grow our enrollment. It's probably not a bad thing to keep it in there a little longer, just in case the boom comes back. Portable buildings might be our first... Portable buildings might be our first response if we really get a bust in a campus. So, I think it's safe to be there. As far as overall fund balances, you see that we're looking at about thirty-one point eight. I wouldn't be surprised if when the smoke clears at the end of the school year, that that's probably closer to thirty-two. Right now, it's just kind of an estimate, but I will not be shocked if it's thirty-two when it's all said and done. The number we like to focus on is the unassigned. Ideally, we'd like that to be about twenty-one to twenty-five million. So, we're kind of dipping below our goal. Our goal is to have, I think, twenty to twenty-five percent of our budget in fund balance. And so, but that's okay, because we're not going to spend all of that committed money at one time. It's going to take a couple of years for sure. So, I'm okay right now at eighteen point five, and like I said, I think that'll be just a little bit higher when it's all said and done. So, the second page of that is some special revenue funds, items that the comptroller and Mr. Webb like for us to keep, and you can read that, probably self-explanatory. We have some money in activity funds. We have the San Angelo Stadium Fund, and we have that insurance fund that we're paying for our wellness program out of. That should be pretty much gone by the end of this next school. Anyway, that's our commitments. Are there other things that you, as a board, were thinking about or would like to comment on? Or are you comfortable with what's presented here?
Questions or?
I'm fine, because this is all, this is the stuff we've talked about several times in several meetings about all this stuff, so yeah, I'm good with it.
Any other comments?
Move to approve the designations.
Second.
So, we have a motion from Mr. Archer and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our GAZB fifty-four designations totaling thirteen million two hundred ninety-seven dollars, two hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. And as Dr. Bright pointed out, you know, this won't be spent in one year. It's over a period of years, but if we're going to commit, a number of these projects are really large projects, so if we're going to commit to doing that. I guess the only question I have, and I missed our workshop, Jeff, has to do with if we ever did something with a performance gym at Central, would there be issues with building dressing rooms where we're talking about replacing dressing rooms?
First off, it's about a fourteen million dollar price tag. I don't see that coming out of fund balance.
Yeah, for sure.
I truly see that being a bond.
It would have to be a bond, yeah.
A bond. So, we're going to, you'd have to go through the bond process. Once that happens, then you're looking at planning. I think you're looking at three years down the road.
Yeah, three to five.
Yes, sir. Minimum.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, I don't want to spend four million dollars and then, and I know our kids need it now desperately, you know, so it's really important that we do it. I just want to make sure that we have room on that campus. I guess we could come forward, you know, with a competition gym.
Yes.
There's some room to do that.
You remember in the assessment, they offered two or three different locations, and it looks like the primary or the best candidate at this point is out in the parking lot.
The old parking lot.
Yes, the old parking lot, west of the campus. That looks like the best spot at this point, but you know, that will come later when we finalize that deal.
Right, okay.
But as far as the dressing rooms go, even if we one day build a competition gym, we're still going to use Lou Gehrig.
Right.
And so, if we're going to use Lou Gehrig forever, we have to get the plumbing taken care of.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that. I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't spend money and then.
We won't abandon it, that's for sure.
Yeah.
And it won't get any better.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's not going to get any better.
It opened my eyes when I saw that thing, that little report you sent us. One of them had twenty showers and only night, only one of them worked at a twenty. One shower, one showerhead was shooting water, so yeah, they're in bad shape.
Mr. Lehman and Mr. Gagel, we had a conversation, I think a couple of us in the room had a conversation with the principal, Bill Waters, at Central on Friday, and that was the exact question we asked. If we did this, it's a large sum of money, you know, in three to five years, if there was a competition gym built, would we still utilize those locker rooms and have, and need that space? And he said absolutely, that we would still utilize them.
I would just add, y'all know this as well, it's not deteriorated from a lack of maintenance and upkeep. It is just worn out.
Well, it was built in nineteen fifty-eight.
Yes, sir.
So.
Done its time.
And we hadn't done anything to it in that long, you know, so, okay. I mean, I'm excited that we have money available to do that, and I think it's, I know we're already doing this, but we need to occasionally, at least historically, we've been criticized for not maintaining, you know, some of our facilities and asking for bond money every time we need to address things. And I think in the last, you know, three to five years, we've spent probably twenty million dollars already on accumulative, on an accumulative basis, taking care of facilities and things that the district needed. And then we're talking about spending an additional, you know, thirteen million, although it won't all be this year, but we're making a significant commitment to maintaining what we have.
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. We've got board comment. Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Dr. Bright and team, for y'all's work on that. And Ms. Hollahan's going to, we're going to have a second hearing for our after-school childcare service.
Yes, sir. This is the second of two required public hearings for the San Angelo YMCA After-School Program. The YMCA After-School Program gives working parents peace of mind by providing supervised cares for their children, supervised care for their children by a professional staff team. The After-School Program practices the four core values, caring, honesty, respect, and responsibility in all their activities, indoors, outdoor, homework time, arts and craft, games, and much more. A healthy snack is provided. This program is licensed through the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. It also provides after-school care to all of our local elementaries for childrens in grades pre-K through five. Our Head Start campuses, as well as all of our elementaries except for Reagan, will have after-school care at the campus. Reagan students will be picked up and bused to the YMCA. We are grateful to the YMCA for providing this continuous partnership that is a valuable benefit for our students, parents, and community. Any questions?
Any questions or? Okay, you're, we release you. Thank you.
Okay, I have one more.
Okay, that's good. All right, now you're next.
I'm Eddie Heath.
So, yeah, you don't look much.
I know Eddie Heath, and you're not Eddie.
Yeah, so the other item, item fifteen, is just, again, a second hearing. We don't, no board action required there. We did, I would second your comments about the YMCA, and thank you for the, that's been a great partnership and one that we're proud of, and we certainly appreciate the role they play in the education of our students by helping them have a safe place and also a place where they can do homework and other activities in addition to snacks. So, thanks for, to the YMCA. And then our next item is sixteen, which is the district's Code of Conduct book.
Every year, the Student Code of Conduct is approved by the Board of Trustees. San Angelo ISD reviews the TASB, Texas Association of School Board Models Handbook, and makes changes accordingly. This year, there were minimal changes. The changes were, the first one was that each campus must identify a campus behavior coordinator who is primarily responsible for maintaining student discipline. The campus behavior coordinator shall notify a student's parent if a conduct violation may result in an in-school or out-of-school suspension, placement in DAEP, or an expulsion. The second addition to the Student Code of Conduct was a definition for an e-cigarette. Parents will be able to review the Student Code of Conduct and also the Student Parent Handbook on our website at www.saisd.org, or request a copy of the Student Code of Conduct or the Student Parent Handbook from their respective campus. Is there any questions on the Student Code of Conduct book?
Questions for Shelley? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion. All move that we approve is the Student Parent Code, or the Code of Conduct that's in, probably in the Student Parent Handbook, but I will make this comment also, Mr. Lehman. The board is, over the last ten years that I've been on the board, we've tried to work very diligently with the Mr. Heath and Shelley to make sure that we've got a Code of Conduct that has a lot of fairness to it, but I would encourage parents and students to make sure they're aware of the Code of Conduct. Many things that are in our Code of Conduct are set by state law. They're not set by us. So, there could be some things there that, there's not any, Ms. Hollahan's gone over the new things, but some people may not know some of the things that are in that Code of Conduct, and it's much better to know about it ahead of time than it is to be surprised later and then be upset with us when the Code of Conduct is been made available to you. If you want a copy, as Ms. Hollahan said, you can go to the, get with your principal's office, probably in whatever campus you were on, to get a copy, or you can go online to see it. But I personally am very proud that where our Code of Conduct is now is compared to what it was ten years ago, in that I think it gives more due process to our students. We're keeping more students in class where they're, but we also are being diligent when need be and very strict when need be on students that are being very disruptive to other students. So, with that, I'll make a motion that we approve our Code of Conduct for the year 2015-2016.
Second. So, thanks, Mr. Parker. We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Dindell. And as someone who's been here longer than Mr. Parker, I certainly concur with many of his comments. I think our board team, as well as our administrative staff, has done an excellent job of having a really fair, you know, Code of Conduct for our students, and one that most of all encourages them to be in the classroom, which is where learning takes place, rather than in some disciplinary type environment. So, thank you. Other comments from our board team, or is there any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item, item seventeen, is to consider the naming of our Altaloma Elementary Library.
Mr. Lehman, our board policy has procedures for naming district facilities, and the staff of Altaloma Elementary would like to honor Sergeant Corby Kennedy by naming the school library in his honor. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Gina Farmer, the principal of Altaloma, and she's going to tell us a little bit more about that. Welcome, Gina.
Thank you all very much for allowing me the opportunity to come before you to make this request. It was made known to me over the summer that the late Sergeant Corby Kennedy went to Altaloma from his kindergarten years through his sixth grade years, and we brainstormed a little bit and came up with something that we thought would honor him by naming our library after him. And so, that's the basis of our request this evening. He was on our campus a lot with the San Angelo Police Department walkthroughs. I met him on several occasions. We felt like he was a good role model for our students and that we could honor him in this way.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Farmer? I didn't realize he went to Altaloma. That's really good, you know.
I did not either. He went there from nineteen seventy-five through eighty-two, kinder through sixth grade.
Well, that's a great way to honor him, and that's all we have to do is have the discussion tonight, and then we'll have another, this will be brought forward again before we do a final approval. But we thank you for bringing that to the board, I think a very small but significant way that we can honor Sergeant Kennedy.
Thank you.
Okay, that's a pretty good group. Announcements, our finance and pre-agenda workshop is scheduled for September fourteenth. Our regular board meeting's on the twenty-first of September. And then I told Marta I would remind everybody that we're, because we need to schedule some training, and I think you say selectity.
How do you say that?
Selectity, I hope.
Schlecty.
Schlecty, Schlecty Center.
Schlecty?
Yeah.
Schlecty.
Many of us have had the privilege of working with Dr. Horn on a number of occasions, and he did some training for our board team when we weren't much of a team many years ago. And then he also has helped us in at least a couple of our superintendent searches, and so we have a, more than just a small amount of respect for him and his role in education. And he's connected with that group, and I kind of told Marta that I wanted us to look at some other opportunities for training. One of the things that I think our board learned the most from was when we were able to go collectively as a board team and train, and also include some of our senior staff members. So, this would include other members of our, of Carl's Senior Cabinet, Senior Management Team that would join us for that training. And that training's scheduled for, at Bass drop, and it's scheduled the eighth and ninth. We would actually leave on the seventh, because the training's all day on the eighth of January. So, y'all look at your calendars. I know, at least currently, Mr. Parker has a potential conflict, and I think everyone else that responded looked like it was a pretty good date for everyone, and although we would do the best we could to make sure that Max is there, but I think, you know, nine out of ten of us is a really good average so far. So, that's, Marta wants to be able to schedule that and plan that, and I told her that, as far as I could tell, it looked like something everybody wanted to do. So, any concerns about that? Y'all get it on your calendar if you don't mind, and that way, I think it'll be a great opportunity for us to get some outstanding training from someone that we all admire and respect, and the role he's played with our district historically has been substantial. So, y'all do that. If you have any changes in your plans or any concerns about that, I guess it's a great time to mention our TASB training as well. That's coming up in the first week of October, first weekend of October, so I think that's like the second and third. We have our delegate and our alternate, I think, appointed for that, and it looks like, I think Marta's taking care of all of our rooms and.
We're going down our children first.
Right, which is Thursday, correct?
Thursday, actually.
Yeah, and then we'll be there Friday and Saturday, and we're coming back Sunday or Saturday?
Saturday.
Are we staying Saturday night?
I am.
Okay, okay, all right. We all let Marta know, because historically, I think sometimes we've, the last part of that's not great, so. And, you know, we.
We can't afford.
Yeah, 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 okay. So, y'all just be reminded of that as far as our training, and that'll help us all meet training requirements. Do we have any other board business that we need to cover this evening? Are there any things that we need to put on our agenda moving forward?
I just want to say one thing that, I don't know, did y'all get the email from Jim Elson this week about the work that you, where's Jim? Did he leave already?
Yeah.
I guess he's gone. I just want to say thanks to all those guys that, that's, like I told them, I sent them an email earlier, and I just told them that, that it's, that kind of work, you know, they worked ten hours a day that day, and then went back, and they were there till one-thirty, two o'clock in the morning, on Thursday night and Friday morning, just to get the electricity back on in Lutrevenio Gym. And I had one person tell me that something wasn't working on Friday, and I told her they were getting all that stuff done, but she went back the next day on Saturday, everything was working fine. So, they, they did an outstanding job, and I just wanted to recognize Jim for that. I thought he was still here, but he's gone, so that's it.
Thanks, Gerard, for mentioning that. Yeah, we have a great team of employees, and that's just proof that we have that. We had a special, a big event with a volleyball tournament and lots of things going on at Central, and we had employees that stepped up and took care of things. So, we appreciate Jim and his team for the responsibility they take and the role they play in education. Okay, if we don't have any further business, and hearing no objections, we'll stand adjourned.